Recording in progress.
Thanks you very much for everything, Randy.
All right, we're gonna get started in just a bit here. Let the folks, if there are still folks joining us or logging on to the meeting, to get started before we get started. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order, so we're calling the meeting to order at 6:32. And just to explain, as usual, the remote meeting and situation and how this will go tonight. We are opening right now the public budget hearing for the Grantham School District budget. And the meeting is available virtually, so I see some folks have joined us on Zoom, which is great. Thank you for joining us. We are also meeting in person. The board, the full board is here in person, which means we do have a forum in person, so the meeting will continue in person. If for some reason we have technology issues, but we're not anticipating any. And so the minutes of the meeting will be available if there is something that happens in terms of the technology. But we will continue with the meeting as an in-person meeting. And that same thing will happen as we move into the standard February board meeting that occurs after this budget hearing. And I'll remind everybody of all of that again. Yeah. So we are going to go ahead and open the public budget hearing for tonight. This is the public hearing ahead of our annual meeting. And so we're gonna just go ahead and get started with that here, and we'll just go through some quick reminders, and then we'll get started in presenting the 2022-2023 budget for the Grantham School District. So we do have a presentation that will go along with the meeting tonight, and then we will open the floor to take public input. The goal of this session is for us to be able to present the proposed budget, collect public input before the board finalizes it at our meeting to follow. So we're gonna pull our presentation up here. Yes, sorry. What's the password? For the Wi-Fi?
Yeah.
If you just got a GBS guest, you should get ready.
Oh, okay.
All right. Okay, so just to start things off, we just want to extend our gratitude as a board to the community, to the Grantham community, for being our collaborators and our partners as we continue to navigate the pandemic, keeping our children at the center of our work here. Just specific callouts, just thank you to the parents and guardians in town who are one of the first lines of communication and support that we receive, and we really appreciate your continued partnership with us and with the school here at GBS. Speaking of the school, thank you to our staff who continue to show up for our students and help them to have as seamless of an experience as we can during these very unseamless, these very seamed times. And thank you to our community members at large. This is really our chance during the budget process to connect most meaningfully with our community at large and to say thank you for supporting us, of course, financially, but also emotionally, and your commitment to helping us as we see ourselves through a transparent and informed decision-making process in all of the decisions that we take on. So just an overview of what we'll be doing tonight and then moving forward in the next month. Tonight, we're going to review the warrant articles and receive input for those. And this is really looking at the Grantham District budget, the operating budget for 2022-2023. We also will be reviewing the Grantham Education Association collective bargaining agreement that was negotiated this year. And then at the board meeting to follow this, we will be discussing the grounds and playground renovation project. Next week, same time, same place, we will have the public hearing specifically for the bond relative to the grounds and renovation playground project. So while the board will be discussing the final action on that project tonight at our meeting, it will not be part of the public hearing tonight. The hearing for that will take place next week. A month from tonight, same place, same time, is our annual meeting, and that is the annual meeting when the voting will take place on our budget, on all of the warrant articles that we'll review tonight. So the budget, the collective bargaining agreement, the playground bond, et cetera. And then March 8 is when we have the town elections. And so for the school board, we will have two open positions, and we will also have two open positions on the board, the board members, and then we will also have elections for our moderator, clerk, and treasurer. So that's just an overview of what's coming up in our very busy agenda for the next month. So for tonight, we are going to go ahead and present to you some information, and then we're going to receive input and feedback on the articles. We'll accept feedback in person, so for folks who are joining us here in person, feel free to speak to those articles. We will also accept feedback through Zoom. If you are going to provide any feedback, we do ask that you state your name and address at the beginning of your comment, so those can be read into the record as a standard procedure according to the RSAs that we follow. So for both virtual and in-person comments, we ask you to state your name and address. And any comments or questions that are typed into the chat will be read aloud as long as they have that name and address. We do ask that you kind of limit those comments to less than 100 words, just so that we're able to provide opportunity for any folks who might like to comment tonight. Okay. So the first article, when the warrant is officially posted, the first article that you will see on the warrant will be the GBS grounds renovation and playground project. As I mentioned before, the board is gonna discuss this at our board meeting to follow, and then we will have a public hearing for this warrant article next week. So moving on, our two on the warrant will be to hear reports. Very standard and straightforward, not much information or discussion we need to have about that. It's a standard article that we see every year. And with that said, we're gonna move into Article 3, which is, I imagine, everyone's thinking they're the most interested in, which is the operating budget, and I'm gonna hand this along to Leslie Donovan.
Thanks, Randy. Article 3 will be our total operating budget, which this year comes in at $10,203,766. And we will get more detail about this particular, this year, the budget we're proposing. Next slide is a financial overview, so this is some of the elements that we've got of the budget. It's important to note that these numbers will likely change based on input and decisions from tonight's hearing. So our proposed operating budget for this year, sorry, our operating budget for this year is $10,291,101. And our proposed budget for next year is $10,253,736. You'll notice that there's a small decrease of about 0.3%. The general fund budget for this year is $9,992,944, and our proposed budget is $9,968,630. Again, there's a decrease there of about $25,000, $26,000, 22%. You'll note that the general fund excludes food service grants and funds for the outdoor classroom and grounds renovation playground funds. Some of the key changes in the proposed budget for next year. In addition of the board of us, we certainly have increased population within the school, and we have an increased population of bus riders, especially here at GBS. A full-time special education director, who's had wonderful and incredible hours serving us. And amazingly, not a full TE status, we are really in need of someone to be a full-time employee. Same goes for increasing time for our superintendent, our superhero superintendent, who, again, amazingly is not full-time status. And we're proposing to increase some superintendent time, increase that to a 0.6TE from 0.5. There's a real need there to pay a superintendent as she works. Updates to the exterior locking system and security cameras. There are additional cameras that the recommendation of our audit, and our locking systems are old and/or obsolete, so we would be replacing them with updated systems. Purchase of a carpet extractor, which is just replacing what we have. Generally increases throughout the budget to accommodate for increased cost of supplies. Everyone's talking about inflation and what things cost these days. We're proposing to replace the classroom FM systems. They are 12 years old and are in need of an upgrade. And then additional funds for student contracted services, such as OTP, T-counseling, somewhat related to our increased population tax. So the anticipated tax impacts for next year will actually go down $0.31 per $1,000 value. Or 30, sorry, $0.31 per thousand, and $31 per 100,000 value. So we were, it was a take-down tax impact.
Thank you. Obviously, you can notice that the impact on the tax decrease is much bigger than the teachers that are funding the budget, so I want to explain a little bit about why that's happening. That's mostly because there is a one-year tax relief from the state for the sweat tax that is usually locally raised upon the schools. So for example, last year's swept that we collected locally was $1,203,164. The state of New Hampshire is reducing the entire amount that everybody across the state has to pay for swept to hopefully provide some pandemic relief. And because of that, this year's swept at the age of 30 is $695,379. So you'll see this big reduction reflected in everything that's moved forward from this point on. And just to have a visual, I thought this might help. So if you look at anything that's included, technically, that is what is locally raised, but they consider the bigger piece, what we fund locally under local tax bill. The other thing they see under tax bill is the sweat tax, which is this piece of the pie, the darker blue piece of the pie. But technically, those are all local funds. It's just that this piece of the pie doesn't go to the state in fact. It's just raised in capital letters. And this is what happened last year. So the orange piece is the adequacy aid. So you can just see that there's a slight shift in this year where we're getting more adequacy from the state because of this sweat relief. This is a little bit smaller of the technically raised that's under local tax bill, the state's about the same, but that's where that reduction is coming from. And I do want to remind everybody, we put it a couple places in the budget, that this is just a one-year tax relief, so there is an expectation that after this year, budget and everything will kind of go back to the way that it was before with the sweat tax rate. Okay, let me get to one. This segment is about the Blue Ribbon School Board, and last year, the Grandville School was awarded the School of Excellence, won 325 awards internationally, and won one of the schools of New Hampshire that we support. Many schools are felt out as examples for other schools in the nation. And as a Grand president, board member, supervisor, students, staff, the administration, and for setting even a minimum wage for each of our school members to celebrate. Next slide. This slide shows what it takes to lead the Blue Ribbon School. For those of you who may be common, I'll actually see the presentation and read each of the bullets. Each school must have two consecutive years of performing in the top 15% of all schools on the state-wide assessment. While suburbs such as Green, Lunch, Special Education must have 40% of the students show a relevant cheer. This is a substantial qualification process, and if you're from West Department, you can help navigate the Grandville School of Union. GPS has really been the most social, the most aware, and really believed in us, what has helped us totally, the staff, to stay healthy and safe, meaning, who's that, the parents. School-wide effort has been especially powerful during stressful times. Learning comes different, social action, interaction, tactic would never make it differently. Concerns for health by revenue personnel. Dedication of staff, students, parents, the administration of Grandville community, as well as flexibility to shift its practices and need and provide our students with core training to be successful in certain challenges. Slides. This current data, this assessment was from 2021 SA test. And we can ask when that was actually done this year. Is that October? This was in the spread. So the blue indicates GPS student performance, and the orange indicates the New Hampshire state average score performance. So if you're only able to see this, for English and language parts, GPS shows a 77% proficiency, while the state average is 50%. For math, GPS scored a 70% proficiency, the average 39%. For science, our GPS students scored a 63% proficiency, the average is 33%. I just want to remind you to publicly appreciate the efforts of our staff and our district to help our kids to be so successful. These results leave the whole Grandville work. And for everyone here, we're being sure that child is supported, non-professional learning situation. Captain Fed, resting, we're just thankful, learning happens when our children are sitting above them. Bond to a panel's powers, and communities, Dr. DePoe, who says, "We occasionally empower." They staff on the child, have to be home before 18:00.
So I'm gonna quickly watch the article for the collective bargaining. We agree to, or starting next year, of the current, perfectly inspiring grant this year. As you'll see, the first slide here talks about the fiscal estimates for the next three years. Specifically moves to raise the corporate sum of $129,878 for this year. This represents the additional costs attributed to salary benefits as far as the board. Outside of the separate those changes, or outside of all the fiscal changes, salary benefits, we also did some cleaning up of language of tax practices to reflect the current ruling. So obviously, those time group is complete. Cleaned up that language. We also just cleaning up all the positions we've seen today. That, some weak positions in here, it's just clarification of existing positions. We also saw a few tweaks. We're also including additional pay for parent educators and for our passing teachers. Teachers that we know over the last couple of years, our current, the last three years, that are covering children's business and staff offices. We've also increased the amount of clubs and conferences for our staff. And just a quick word out to our staff, I think, we've talked about Blue Ribbon, and everything that goes along with that, our staff has put in some hard work, especially the last year. Working the way through the pandemic, being here for our students, keeping school open, connecting relations with families. Just a big thank you to everyone for, to use a certain bit of challenge. I really think we've avoided, that's the challenge. Some of the details of those increases, the staffing costs, professional staff, we're recommending a 2.5% increase over the rest of the year, each year for the next four years. Education supports that for this current fiscal year, it's a 4% increase, and then 2.5% for the next two, four years. Food and service, studies, we're proposing a 5% increase each year for the next four years. So the total tax impact of the CBA for 2022-2023 is $24 cents per thousand, $24.30. We combine this with the operating budget, which saw a decrease of $0.31 per thousand. Overall, we're coming in with $0.70 production per thousand. Several other. Putting the opera on, this meeting, which is.
Just a quick word that when we go into report meetings, the board will need to have the discussion of the anticipated fund balance, because that has a direct impact on the tax rates for next year. So right now, with all these estimates received tonight, we estimated that on a $275,000 dollar fund, expected fund balance within its tax reset. And there will be three options that the board will discuss later on. One would be we could contribute $50,000 to one of our trusts that we save, that we save money for, possibly tuition. The board can choose to add that $50,000 to what's already existing and offset the tax rate even more. And then another option, it would be to use funds to encumber these funds to move forward with the pavilion, the main barn, and work equipment for the playground on the bench room. So that will be discussed a little bit later, when we talk to you about the finalizing warrant articles and after we present the grounds renovation playground project. One other thing that the board needs to consider is there are new laws this year about voting on the living party improvements. I just need to ask if you would like to consider a special meeting for the CBA in a language will be Sheldon Grantham School District, if Article 4 is to be authorized by the school board to follow up special meeting at its option to address our four costs under the school link. So you don't have to have that article on there, but I just need to ask if that's something that you're interested in doing.
Okay, and then our five of the warrant will be to transact any further visits, so that will be, you can stay tuned next month to see what happens with Article 5. So at this point, that ends the formal presentation of the budget by the board. We will open the floor for public comment or input as part of this hearing. So if you do have comments or input that pertain to the budget that was just presented, please feel free to share those with us, folks in the room, or if you are joining us virtually, you'd like to type into the chat. Just a quick reminder, because I know, Bren, that is hoping that I'll say this to everyone, is a reminder to share your name and address with us at the beginning of your comment. And just as a quick reminder, this, as I mentioned, that these are comments pertaining to the budget that was presented. There will be another public comment session at the board meeting to follow, so we want to take any input about pertaining to the budget, I think. Or the, correct, yes, the budget, any of the warrant articles that we discussed, other than the playground bond. The meeting for the playground bond will be next week. So the collective bargaining agreement, the operating budget. And if there are questions about the budget that we can address, we would also take those down as well. I know it's been two years of me saying that I want Zoom to have a little, like, swirling dots to tell me that some of us are typing. They haven't done it yet.
Somebody can also, if they want to be from you to speak.
Sure, if you would like, yep, if you would like to speak, and you can type into, or let us know that you would like to be brought in to speak for the, for people who are joining us virtually. Give a little longer, since I know if folks have longer questions, it may take them a little longer to take the, the whole question in. I'll give it just one more minute. I would just say thank you to folks that have joined us virtually. We really appreciate folks joining us for this to hear through the budget here. Even if you don't have any comments or questions at this point, we appreciate you being here to hear the proposed budget and to hear the next steps of what's coming, like I said, in this busy month ahead of us. Okay, so I don't see any comments coming in. We don't have anyone in the room or the floor that's come forward to speak. So at this point, we will adjourn the public hearing, so we're adjourning the public hearing for the budget, the public budget hearing. We are going to continue on and have our February board meeting, so we hope people stay and join us for that. We also hope that you will join us next week for the playground bond hearing and then for our annual meeting in March. So are we just staying here for the virtual meeting? We're just gonna go right in.
Perfect.
Just to stay.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so what we will do is we will open our February board meeting, and so we're opening the February board meeting at 6:57. We will, just as a reminder for folks who have joined us, we are holding the meeting in person. We have the full board here in person tonight. So the meeting will proceed in person with the work of the board being done here. If for some reason we lose our technology access that we are providing, there are minutes being taken for this meeting that will be available for review, so just a quick reminder on that. We will, we're gonna start the meeting by approving our agenda. Are there any changes or adjustments to the agenda for tonight?
I have, I have a question. I don't know if you want to do public input after the grounds renovation playground, or if you want people to have a public comment at the volunteer next week. Is it good that we don't?
I think we will do, we'll start with a public participation now, what's to come, and then we'll do, we'll have public comment at the volunteer next week, so the full discussion will come up there. Any other changes to the agenda? Okay, so we'll need a motion to approve the agenda. So I have a motion from Leslie. I need a second.
Second.
A second from Ed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, so we'll open the meeting tonight with public participation, as we normally do. We're going to be discussing the articles for the warrant later on in our agenda, as well as, as I mentioned, the grounds and playground renovation project. If folks have any comments for public participation now, they are welcome to speak here in person or to type into the chat of the virtual meeting. I'm gonna say this so many times to you, and be so proud we brought that. If you could provide your name and address at the beginning of your comment, so that we have that in the record. If you do provide that, then we will be able to read your comment publicly here. I just did this, but now I'm gonna give it a few minutes to see if anyone has any comments to provide today. If there are questions that come forward during this time, just a reminder, public participation is a chance for the board to hear from the public. If there is a question that we have a quick answer to, we may provide it. More typically, we will hold on to that question or comment and make sure that it is addressed later on during the board's discussion and action items. The virtual access meeting that we're keeping, keeping people around for our February board meeting. While I'm waiting for if there's any comments. While I'm waiting for if there's any comments, I am starting to wonder how long it will be that we haven't moved until the lights turn off. Because that always happens. We said, we said, it's not used to a room of people sitting still. It's to a gym class.
Brittany, while we're waiting, I just want to be sure I'm clear about the process here.
Yes.
So I understand that next week, when there's a hearing on the bond, at that point, we'll, we'll move the article for the warrant.
Yeah. Yep. So tonight we'll come up with what the final, of what will be presented at the hearing. Yeah, next week. Yeah, I don't see anything coming in. So we'll go ahead and move on. So our first agenda item tonight is to move articles to the warrant. So tonight we are, we all accept the Article One, which is the bond. So we can open discussion for the board on any of the warrant articles that we just went through and highlighted. Sure, yeah.
Anything on Article Two?
So Article Two will be to hear the reports, any comments or discussion of Article Two. Okay, so we need a motion to move Article Two to the warrant. So I have a motion from Denise and a second from Leslie. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, so we'll move on to Article Three. So Article Three will be the operating budget. So we need, is there a discussion of Article Three, the operating budget?
I need to read it.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Unless you have to read it.
I can read it. I'm happy to. Is it the same as? Okay, perfect.
And there's also a chance that later decisions in the board meeting, you could adjust the number, but okay.
You can start with this. All right. So to see if the district will vote to raise and appropriate a amount of ten million, twenty-five, two hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars for the support of schools, for the payment of salaries for the school district officials and agents, and for the payment of the statutory obligations of the district, and to authorize the application against appropriations of such sums as are estimated to be received from state and federal governments. Together with other income, the balance to be raised by taxation by the school district, this article does not include appropriations contained in special or individual articles addressed separately. So it is unadjusted. Yeah, so that was one of the adjustments.
Can you give us the number again?
Ten million, two hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six.
Thank you. Yes. Okay, so we have a motion to move this article to the warrant from Leslie. We have a second from Ed. Is there any further discussion for this item? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay. So we'll move forward. Is it the same?
This one's the same.
This one's the same. All right. So we have Article Four, the collective bargaining agreement. So we will need a motion to move Article Four to the warrant. This is the collective bargaining agreement to see if the Grantham School District will vote to approve the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement reached between the Grantham School Board and the Grantham Education Association, which calls for the following increases in salaries and benefits at the current staffing level. For fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, estimated increase of one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight. For fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, estimated increase of one hundred and eighteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one. And for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, estimated increase of one hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-one. And further to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight for the current fiscal year. Such sum representing the additional costs attributable to the increase in salaries and benefits required by the new agreement over those that would be paid at current staffing levels. The total cost over the three-year period equals three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, thirty dollars. I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Ed. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay. And Article Five, which is to, I believe, to transact any other business.
Yes.
We need to, a motion to move Article Five, any other business, to transact any further business before this annual meeting to the warrant.
So move second.
I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Christine. Any discussion of that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And Sydney, would you like us to discuss the special meeting for CBA?
Yes. Would you like to have that as a warrant article?
So discussion of if we would like to add the language that Sydney discussed. So it would be the language saying, Sheldon Grantham School District, if Article Four is defeated, authorize the school board to call one special meeting at its option to address Article Four cost items only. So the thought behind this would be, should that article fail, there would be a a special meeting called to handle the cost items associated with that. There are pros and cons to either of that, and the board can discuss what we see as.
So I'm assuming that means that there would be a reopening of negotiations before that special meeting.
And this is not something that we have to do. It's our. If we didn't? So if we did not do this, and if the, the, if Article Four failed, so you're asking for?
And then CBA would stay as sales club.
Yeah, then the, the.
Oh, the current.
The current one would move forward, but I believe there would be, have to be another negotiation for acting, sorry, for next year. Right. So it would, I mean, it would be the same thing that would happen, you know, it would be what would happen if our, if the, if that article had failed previously.
But then you would not be operating with a full-time special ed director, correct? This is the reverse back to the firm, but we need there's some downtime for that. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. I'll just talk about a few, like, the pro is that is you don't want the, you know, you want the contract to cut, obviously, because it's always better for the school, for the community and everything. But it does give you a chance to go back to a special meeting, you know, readjust the costs and go back again if it fails. The cons that you want to think about are that can bring some touch on community relationships, you know, so if the community really comes out and does vote it down, it's tough to open that up again. And there would be concerns about, does nobody know where we're going to do this again? And, and also, I think just thinking of our community, you would want to think about this as a, you know, responsible left of our meeting moving forward. And generally, a great community support of education. So those, those are the things that you want to weigh in terms of the person.
Yeah, and it feels, feels like bringing forth this option to the warrant. It doesn't exactly do this, but it almost like pulls into the question of our faith in the process. But tonight, we'll face that we've done a really nice job negotiating GEA and that we feel really good about presenting to the taxpayer. So it seems like, as I said, it's almost like. All of faith next question. Yeah, so I am not really a favorite of that. I was going to make the same comment. So we don't, if we're not making this an article, we don't have to take it.
Nope.
Okay. Did you want, was this where we should also discuss the anticipated fund balance, or is that later? Okay. All right. So our next discussion and action item is the GBS grounds renovation and playground project. And I imagine you have a presentation and update for us.
I do. I'm very excited to present to you about this. Well, I know a lot of people have been anxiously waiting to see what the plans look like because we had good participation from our community. And we had two concepts, concept A, concept B, and it wound up, of course, that everybody wanted concept C. So I think we get to take a look at concept C and the bigger picture of what would be happening with this bond. So the purpose tonight really for the board is to go through the history of the plan, the plan itself, moving forward. And the board will tonight need to know what number we actually want to, what we're going to put on that bond next week with volunteering, where if you have any questions or follow up about anything before we move forward to that part of the annual meeting process. So basically, we have a playground project that we have been working on for a long time, which is not just a playground project, but obviously a tremendous amount of site work because I think everybody's well aware of the fact that drainage has been a problem, not even the building insurance is a problem, not having the right tenant for kids are all the things that we've been looking into. Just to give a brief history of the project, during the two thousand renovation, everybody was already aware that there were drainage problems and that the place base generally didn't serve the needs of all students that already came up back then. And at that time, there was an approximate two hundred thousand dollar surplus in the total building project that was considered to take care of this and redesign the playground. The decision was made back then to hold off on that because plans for developing the Grantham rec plant. And it was thought that it was best a way to see how the rec plant developed and how the toward the development company in the school. So this has been an issue, at least since the two thousand renovation that people have been talking about, that everybody was trying to just sort of wait to find out how they would both fit together for everybody in Grantham. In more current history, this proposed project was identified as a certain central need in our strategic planning process in two thousand seventeen. And based on the estimates of the other playgrounds and some anticipated drainage and site work costs, the board proposed a bond for five hundred thousand dollars last year. It did wind up failing by twenty-one votes, so we need a sixty percent majority and that failed by twenty-one. I got a lot of feedback after last year's annual meeting and it fulfilled as the main concerns with the bond. There was a desire to see an actual plan and design prior to the vote. There was a desire to see the expected breakdown of costs related to the plan. And there was definitely a prioritization for the town board for the fire truck last year. So those were the main things that I heard of in the warrant to go through last year. Since last March of twenty-one, we've released two RFPs. So we've completed a site survey, which completes all of our designs that's already complete. And we released another RFP to contract with a design engineer firm to create the conceptual design, which is also complete and it's been a really run process. So I know this is small, so I want to be able to, this, this isn't the one that I'm going to zoom in on, just to let you know, I'm going to zoom in on the actual plan. This is our existing site survey. So this is what you would be looking at currently at GBS. So if you can see my cursor, this is where the school is. And then this is obviously learning drive where you come in. This is our existing kind of duck outs and kickball field. These are two leach fields that are right here. This is where our current equipment structures are. Open space, a lot of open space here, the dog up at the horse, tennis courts and investment court over there. So by doing this site survey, we were able to get the basic layout of our useful space and the complete confront locations of septic, leach fields, current drainage and irrigation systems. And then we did that in conjunction with the septic assessment. So the good news is that we don't really have to look into changing our septic system and moving the leach fields at this point. We're going to get a lot, lot more time than, than just a huge release. The site survey provided us with information on how to fix the drainage issues in our design plan. We were able to complete soil assessments to look at not just the leach field, but how our soil will actually help drain and solve some of our drainage issues. It helped us to identify remnants from the septic smell. So for any who have been out there, there are some mornings where it's quite hoky out there for the septic smell. And this is going to serve as our premise for all of our permitting votes over this site survey. We worked with Horizon's engineers, something we want to work with. Then we started going through a process to identify our needs and priorities, which, once we've got this base site done. So the site survey plus our contracted designer S E group, and they've also been fantastic to work with. We had multiple opportunities and multiple staff, students, comparing community group sessions to provide input and feedback through the iterative process. So it's been going back and forth, looking at concepts, surveys going back and forth to get to the final sum. There have been open sessions, surveys, and they came here to do onsite work with students, which I think people have heard that the fourth graders requested a jacuzzi, but personally, that did not lead into the final plan. I can do this way, whether I'm here. And throughout all of this, we've been having like our meeting sessions with the GBS grounds renovation and playground committee, which is a really great dedicated group of people who've been working on getting this going for years now. So we very clearly through this whole process identified our needs and priorities. Fixing the drainage issues is number one. Allowing for the extension of all season play, not closing structures during freezing temperatures. Equipment needs for the bigger kids and what came through the period loud and clear was especially grades from three to six and especially climbing, something to climb on. ADA accessibility for all students, a commitment to GBS and Grantham values and connections to the outdoors, sustainability and outdoor learning through play. The increased importance of outdoor time now, especially with the pandemic and in the future, kind of like the social emotional benefits that kids are getting outside. That's not going to go away. We're going to keep that going and ask what continues to live for and recover from the pandemic. And we did hear feedback that kind of a major remedy and disconnect between the GBS facility, the quality of the education and the existing playground. So people, several people commented in these surveys about how we have an outstanding facility, we have outstanding education that we provide here, that the playground doesn't meet both of those. It's at a different level. So here is the actual plan. Let's see if it's easier, it might be easier for me to zoom. I'm not sure. I'm going to go through the bigger picture first and then if I need to go, I'll see if I can bring up the document to do different than this. So where you're seeing all of these red boxes, which I don't need you to read, but all of those red boxes are things that the design company unfortunately had to remove. So of course, you go through the design process and you identify all of your needs and they come up with a beautiful concept C. And the concept C was one point three million dollars that they put at us. And we really knew right away that that was something that was going to be put forward to the community. So we went through a whole other process with the grounds renovation playground committee to really cut and scale back everything. So all of these red boxes are things that we unfortunately had to cut back from the plan to be able to get to what we're proposing for the new bond, which is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I'll give you more detailed breakdowns of that in a minute. So again, here's learning drive. You're going to see a few of the improvements in the site plan. And what you're going to see here is a new walkway here and over this way to make it a little bit easier of an entry point and more accessible as they're coming into the entryway. There is, the star garden is going to stay the same. There are some features in here, this area that I'm circling right now is going to be the other playground. And for example, we're thinking maybe that would be suitable for grades two through six, which is where our biggest priority is. There are going to be rain gardens again to get that, and sustainability in there. And this equipment in here is sort of our biggest item, which is a climbing tower. So the biggest piece of feedback we have, again, from kids, from parents and from staff, was having something related to climbing for the bigger kids. So that's where the climbing tower is going to go. And then there are other small spinning elements that are there. And then there's a three base swing area that's over here and then some other kind of smaller climbers that are here. Then there's going to be kind of a similar open space, but it's obviously going to be regraded and you'll be able to see some areas very fainting where there's speed and catch bases that are made created to be able to fix the drainage and some of these installed around so that you don't have to worry about so much of the skating pond issue that we got. Over here, when you climb in, we're natural. Over here, we climb in a more natural bike. The plan is to construct a giant hill, and by giant, I mean just a big hill. A big hill here. And then on this hill, of course, the winter area would be for sledding, which would be great to have another activity. And then on this side, there's going to be a climbing place to climb up the hill and a giant slide down into a multi area there. But there's also kind of a path where it's ADA accessible and kids can get up to that area of that. This is, speaking of the path, this is kind of like a, this can almost be kind of a roost track for each that going. So it provides ADA access and allows kids to really access every single part of the playground. Over here, right next to the school is the plan for where we would install the youth barn pavilion that has been donated and that's a perfect place for it because not only is it easy access from cafeteria with kids who now think we wind up eating lunch or snack out there, but it's so close to classrooms and multiple door access points that we hope that there's a lot of construction in the new space happening out there as well. We, this would be considered kind of a lower playground, maybe some younger equipment, so maybe some smaller structures there, some spinners, like a couple other pieces of equipment there that would be more suited to K through two level. But again, not blocking it off, want kids to challenge themselves, but just making sure that there are safe options for all the levels that we have here at GBS. Over here on this side, we're recommending the removal of the tennis courts. And we did talk quite a bit about removing the tennis courts. We surveyed a lot of people and got feedback and they primarily just said they're empty. They're not used. And they would be expensive for us to repair and fix. And we would prefer that we have an open space to create where we can have a soccer pitch in there. So the advantage of having this open field space plus an open field over here and it's a big advantage to us is that we can have a class out for recess. Well, we also have a class out for PE. So we can serve both of those needs at the same time and everybody has enough space to do what they want to do. Also, some of the younger kids' sports through the rep department still do some soccer where we are and they would still be able to have access to that kind of soccer pitch that field over there. And then over here, we will keep the existing basketball court, but also move and have some four square areas and the dog out bed over there. One of the concepts didn't have the dog out bed and that was just not acceptable. Everybody made sure that the dog out bed moved into this area. Shade trees all around, fixing all of the drainage. We didn't feel it was necessary to reinstall an irrigation system. We don't need it currently, we don't need it for many years. So we didn't think that that would be an expense that we would want to incur. For those people around the playground, I'm not forgetting to point out any of the things before we do more. It's a wonderful design. It really does meet all of our needs.
I just thought of one question. If assuming the pre-K play area stays, it doesn't exist?
Yeah, there are some pretty strict laws that pre-K either has to have a separate playground or if they use the playground that's at the school, they can only use it when other kids are on the road. And they can't go once or twice in front of it. So it's best for them to keep the pre-K playground.
How many, like the pavilion, I don't know if that's part of this discussion, but how many students could actually either be under this pavilion or, I don't know, like it's a large place?
We're hoping that we can have it, obey that when we want to step up lunches. We're going to have two grade levels out there eating at a time.
That's a lot. That's good.
Just make sure if you can hear you.
I just want to reiterate, we're calling it a K through two playground, a K through six playground. There's a lot of concern that we're going to move to the teenage level. That's not the case. It's challenged by children. Something that we'll see on the doors.
And I think what is really exciting about this is that we have a lot of feedback about the natural play. The kids were so excited about the idea of having a build for sledding and climbing and rolling. We have a big slide. But they're equally excited about still having equipment. So I think that this really balances, you know, all of those things. So as we're looking at the total project cost, it would be $820,000, which would result in us, our proposal is that the board moves forward with the $750,000. I know that that sounds like a really big number, but when you're getting down to what things actually cost and when we're breaking it down, it makes a lot of sense. So the site work, which will be current demolition, drainage, fixing all the drainage expansion, readying, paving, landscaping and all the blankets under the equipment would be $318,730. And again, these are estimates because this has to go up to bid at some point. The equipment, which would be the play equipment itself, including things like the pieces of equipment plus a bike rack and insulation, would be $312,527. I get a lot of the questions about why equipment is so expensive. And it really has to do a lot with what the companies need to do to have equipment that is certified as safe for children to play on for decades. So the companies really have to go through a relatively thorough process to sell something that our insurance company says, yes, this is okay for your school playground. And that has to be a lot of the cost right now. Permanent legal, corporate, works cost will be about $17,500. Design and engineering cost ongoing for the whole rest of the project, we're estimating at about $50,700. The contractor markup, we're estimating at about $60,500 and contingency fund for about $60,500. And all of that together will be the total cost. So our fundraising and cost that we already incurred, we have currently raised $46,215 from the original commitment that the grounds and playground committee said that they matched the town's original $50,000. So with an additional $3,785 as of today, we will reach our $50,000 goal and we will receive an additional $10,000 as soon as we reach that $50,000 goal because that was one of the donation promises. The current balance of the playground expendable trust is $50,952, seven cents. We have so far with the site engineering plan and the survey and the S E group's design process, we've incurred $41,500 approximately so far, or about up to that, I believe that's still for S E group, but that's a max for the contracted one. And this means that that puts us at about $69,454 for getting started with the project outside the bond. So we looked into what kind of a bond we would recommend. A 20-year bond, which is 3% interest, would result in a total interest rate of $236,250. A 10-year is 2% interest with a total interest rate of $93,750. So we're going to recommend a 10-year bond, which would give us a savings on the interest of $142,500. And if we look at the tax impact, it's a 10-year bond, but it's really 11 years because next year we just pay the interest on the bond and then you start the 10 from beginning after that. So if you look at the beginning, next year we just pay the interest. So the median home price right now in Grandham is $400,000. So basically, this is the tax impact per thousand for the bond if it passes. And then in parentheses, you would see if you, for example, had a $400,000 home, this is what it would add to your annual taxes. So next year it would add $12,000. For the first four out of the 10 years of payback, it's 16 cents per thousand. So it's about $16,4 additional annual taxes. The following four years are 58 cents, so about $60 a year would be added. And then in the final two years, it goes down to 14 cents, it would be about $66,000 total in taxes. So we do still currently have a bond. So we still have six years after this to pay off the current bond. So I just wanted everybody to have a quick visual of how this would hold her back with the bonds that were currently paid, which is still on the 2008 renovation. So in this proposed budget, you know, that's really just that 3 cent impact. And then you have six years where we would have an overbath of principal interest of the renovation playground bond. And then after '28, '29, it would drop down here because the other bond would be paid off. So we may look at the overlap area for about six years. There are some, I just want to let you know, there are some other funds available if you want to consider anything like this. There are S R funds. I'm going to say that I need to let you know that those are there, but I'm also going to recommend that you don't use them. So there are concerns with federal requirements for all construction projects under the S R grants. And basically, it's that we would be obligated to follow Davis Bacon rules, which means we're going to get the highest labor costs in weathered one. And that could make the project more expensive, but it could also affect the bids on the project. So that's a good reason to stay away from the S R funds. And we don't have that ton of money in the S R funds. So I don't think it's worth it to incur those additional costs. I think that you could consider S R funds after we get our needs assessment back, but maybe we could use it for some things, like some tables for the pavilion or some pieces of play equipment and things like that could probably be a good use, but just not for the construction itself. And in one of our trust accounts, the school construction trust from that, remember that $200,000 surplus we were talking about? There's still $79,608 available there. You could access that trust, however, you want to think, I don't think right now we need an addition to GBS, but if at some point, if you feel like you want to make sure that that's always there, in case you need to do some kind of two other classrooms or something on GBS, then you could access it for this and then start replenishing that fund. Or you could just leave that where it is because I think that amount would probably, like we had some seed money to do our site survey and our design. You know, that money can be there for that if you need to do additions and better. But those are the other funds that are open to you. In terms of overall timing, we do have an issue where whenever you're doing any kind of big project that is over 50,000 square feet, where I think at least double that, maybe more, we would have to get alteration of temporary permits. And we would have to decide, and this is if the bond passes, we would have to decide if we made for construction to do this all at once or if we complete at least one section, like that priority grade two through six playground of the upper playground, this summer in the pavilion or something and then complete the whole rest of the project the following summer. And the reason for that is that our engineers and designers are saying the AOT, the alteration of temporary permits are sometimes taking four to six months to go back. You know, so we're really, we've really been running up to how much time do we actually have to build in the summer? We might not have that time. How much would we want to be doing during the school year, rushing against waiting for the ground if we lose those kind of things? So if the bond passes, those are some things that we'll have to decide later. The factors really that we need to look at are kind of the permitting timeline, final plans and specs and the construction bid going out in select commitment and then contractor availability, because contractors are right now. In terms of the timing regarding this tax year, in absolutely all articles passed this year as proposed because we are having a bit of tax year this year. They will know, everybody's, including the bond, everybody's taxes will go down, I think, four cents per thousand. So even if the bond passes for next year, taxes will still go down. But I do want to remind everybody, it's a one-year tax break because of SWEAP. So when you look at that first bond payment, that's 16 cents per thousand. It's going to fill up again the S R budget and the CD and everything. One thing that I really want the board to consider is that we are going to recommend that we move forward with the pavilion this summer, whether or not the bond passes. And that was one of the things that I put in the discussion of that, the anticipated fund balance moving forward. My recommendation would be that we continue, no matter what happens, to build the pavilion because I believe we're still going to be eating outside, who can spend a long time outside. And we already have the amazing commitment from the bar that we can, they're really moving forward. So it'd be great to just keep going with that. If we wound up renting tents again, we would be spending another $20,000 compared to spending about $50 for this permanent structure. We have already spent $31,000 on tent rentals since the pandemic started. So that one seems a little bit like a breaker to me. You can recover funds from the current budget with the same tax impact that you're looking at. And the pavilion's already incorporated into the design and engineering plan. So it's actually just ready to go if you want to do that. And I'm going to take a sip of water because I've got a lot. Questions, discussion and action? Thank you. Okay, so questions in the session from the board?
Well, I just wanted to mention, I was talking with Cindy yesterday and realized that I was a playground user in the 1950s. And I, I realized that the playground I used looked a lot like the one we have now. And it seems to me it's time to move into the century.
I'm really appreciative of the environmental emphasis with this whole design. It's wonderful. They're not just going out to play, they're going out to learn hard. That's really important. We need stewards.
Yeah, I really appreciate the, being able to have the, the idea of having those separate spaces where folks can be out at recess and classes can be outside simultaneously in sort of designated areas. I think that's really a big benefit to it. And I would say my other point that I would be in support of right now is moving forward with the pavilion project. I think it's.
Yes.
That makes absolutely sense.
It's a lot of money to spend on semi-permanent tents. And we need an investment and it's just better served.
And now we have the design, we know where it goes to fit in that design. So if we need to do stage construction.
I'm just looking for the P D R. And so Cindy, just for, to reiterate it for clarity, at the end of the presentation, you said that, so if the operating budget article, the CBA article and the bond all pass, that would be a decrease.
You would see a decrease in taxes of four cents per thousand.
Of four cents per thousand.
Okay. Because our operating budget is down and even though the CBA is 24 cents per thousand, the SWEAP difference makes a difference for us. But just, it's also because that first year of the bond would just be that 3 cent impact. So that's, that's the smallest year of the bond. And it actually could change depending on some of the other decisions you make later in the board meeting. It could be even less. And by less, I mean more savings than four cents per thousand. Or no, it wouldn't, right? No, never mind. It would be about four cents per thousand, right? I think you're probably also excited about the plan that you don't have any questions.
Very current situation too. I don't really have questions.
But personally, the $80,000 is something that's up in the trust. I would eat the, I think the $8,000 is something that's up in the trust right now. Just in case. Especially since the, sort of, if we're seen addressed during the, all those definitions.
So if we decided to use that school construction trust, would that bring down the amount that would, that we would bring forward for the bond?
So you could, you could, for example, reduce the bond, you know, purchase the bond to, you wanted to do 675,000 or something like that, or 700,000. Or you could just give the grounds probation figure committee $8,000 more because we can find more equipment. Because we do cut that out. I also wanted to let you all know that I'm actively writing grants at this stage. It's tough to get grants since we got the plan, but now they got the plan. It's really much easier to start writing grants. So benefits are guaranteed, but, and we wouldn't know for a while, but I just wanted to play it and that's still happening too.
Okay. Will, I don't, I don't know anything about playground construction. Is the, if some, you said there were some like equipment that had to be pulled back. If, will the sort of like, will the plan be room for adding equipment? If we were in a future position to fund future equipment? Okay, so there would be space and there would be sort of like infrastructure available. So like, let's say in, you know, two or three years, there's a surplus or something like that. We could add some equipment onto the playground at that time.
Yeah, there's a couple of things that shifted, like the big three base wings. Those completely got pulled out some place and put someplace else because we moved equipment. But where those were, we could consider putting in some missengers that were taken out or some of the baskets, wings, those kinds of things. Also, they took out some of the, like, complete paving everywhere. So that's something that people wanted to do in the future, like over towards the soccer pitch going out to that part of the lot for another accessway. Those are things that we pulled back to get down to 750. Those are things that could still happen in the future.
And I agree with the, you know, that, that balance being there, having its, its intended use was this purpose. Yeah, it's using that wood for us closer aligned with the numbers that we were looking at previously.
So are we talking about using almost all of the funds in the construction trust or maybe something like 50,000? It's up to you. You can decide how much to use out of that completely. What you can use, you know, you could go to 67, 675, which would kind of deplete, almost deplete, not really. I mean, keep the trust open. Or you could say, you know, I want to, we use 50 out of it, make the bond 700,000. And that'll be a bit more buffer getting at some point.
Hey, the other thing I'll throw out though is that the likelihood of us seeing the 2% rates after this year is next year. That is everything else that we actually have brings over the next concession. So if we are due this, certainly we'll have to do it now. I'd be, I think I'd be in favor of doing something like 700,000, 0.50% of the construction. Trust, that still leaves us about 30,000.
No, out of the trust.
Out of the trust, that way you're working at 700,000 for 10 years.
What are, so are people in favor of the 10-year?
Yes.
Yeah.
And taking 50,000 out of the, and taking 50,000 out of the construction.
Here, just did a quick search and the. The, the bond, the last bond that they sold was 1.41%. That was the actual sale price. So they're moving 2% for the July sale, but it took them under that. So it is a good time to borrow money.
I'm trying to piece together emotion from this discussion. So I'm just. So it, it sounds like, and we can discuss this more. It sounds like, from what I'm hearing, people are in favor of approving a bond of $700,000 over 10 years and taking, what was the amount from the? From the trust? Would those be two separate? Yeah.
So the bond, no, the article, that's when you would move to the article. And that's where you would actually officially go to the, to the, to the, to the. For the 50,000, you have to hold a public hearing to be able to access the funds from that capital trust account, which can happen anytime. And then the other decision would be, if you want to refer the pavilion, you would have to say that you're going to encumber up to $50,000 of current funds to move forward with the pavilion project.
Is that current funds, does that answer the anticipated fund balance question? So it would be from the, it would be current funds from the anticipated fund balance.
But it doesn't change any of the numbers that you saw tonight? Meaning it doesn't impact that four cent, four cents savings?
CBA, summer construction, is that?
Yeah.
So how does that line up with the playground, if everything?
We don't know because it's going to depend on how fast those permits go with the engineering cost. I'm not the engineering cost, but the contractors bidding. It's really that alteration of training, that's where you come in. So if we wanted to say, we're not going to do anything except the pavilion this summer, we could do the pavilion and then hold off for a year and have the entire project done in the summer of '23. The other thing is, I think people are pretty anxious to get something done. So what we can do is while we're doing the pavilion project, we could possibly do that other playground at the same time. So that we have some more motion and that's our highest priority area. But then leave the entire rest of the project for summer of '23. So since we're dealing with so much more than 50,000 square feet, I think the chances are pretty slim that we're actually going to get that AOT permit and be ready to go with a contractor to do everything this summer. I think it's just too tight. So the question would be, would we want to get something done?
Yeah, and given it saves the tent rental, it makes sense to just, go ahead.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve, it would be Article 1. So it would be to approve Article 1 for a, do I need to say all of those words that are there?
No.
Because that would happen next week. But that's what I thought. Okay. For the GBS grant renovation and playground bond for $700,000 over 10 years. We have a motion from Leslie and a second from Denise. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay, and then we need a motion to encumber up to $50,000 from the current funds for the construction of the pavilion project.
Second.
I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Christine. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay, and so that will move forward for the, the first part. For the article, we'll move forward to the bond hearing next week. Okay. Anything else you need from us for the grounds renovation and playground project? Other than the next thing?
Other than the next.
Which is the clerk of the works job description. So we have in our board packet, we have a copy of the clerk of the works job description. And I think Cindy has some updates for us on things we asked for from the last meeting.
So in the last meeting, you had asked that I send the clerk of the works job description on to some people. So I sent it to Steve Schneider, that Eastman, to Duncan Wood, who was recommended by Christine and to our SAU partners who work with clerk of the works all the time. So based on their recommendations, we just made a few pretty prominent changes in terms of, and all of them were really helpful and very happy to change things. Just mostly some language in terms of change orders, notification of safety issues and who does the purging, those kinds of things. One thing that I recommend that I add just at the bottom, or we can even put this in the app when this goes out, is just that there was a final recommendation that came in after this one year board packet just to note that travel time will only be billed if we request that the clerk goes someplace. So we're not going to bill them to come to and from Grantham or to and from the site. But if we say we need you to go to Conover to work on a permitting issue, then we would give them travel for that.
Any other questions and discussions on the clerk of the works job description? Okay, so we'll need a motion to approve the clerk of the works job description.
Some more.
Second. I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Christine. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay, our next agenda item is the after-school program. And we have a memo from Cindy in our board packet regarding this and a big fun match.
Yeah, so this is something that obviously we've had a lot of conversation with the community about that at the beginning of the year, about moving back the after-school program. It has not been easy to run after-school program this year. And it was actually a pretty conversational before the pandemic because it became wildly popular. And it's, it takes its toll on the SAU and on GBS in multiple ways that I outlined in the memo. Our recommendation is going to be, and I don't know if Mrs. Reed will want to add something at some point, but our recommendation is going to be that the district chooses to contract out of our after-school program to Camp Coniston. They run after-school programs throughout the area. They have a great reputation. And I think there are some pros and cons that the cons would be that we would be looking at basically, right now, we've got a nice situation where our school social worker is going to run the after-school program and add, you know, added benefit to some kids who really need it most because we've been prioritizing kids with needs this year due to the pandemic. We wouldn't have that unless, and this isn't a conversation for tonight, but unless the board would like to use some of the SRF funds to keep a half-time social worker for part of next year, which is something that we can explore later on. There are a lot of pros to contracting it out. And we did have quite a few parents ask us why we didn't contract it out, you know, in the year. It would just basically look that, that just some of the bigger pros. I think that parents would probably be happy that Coniston would do Fridays because we only do Monday through Thursday because we haven't ever been able to staff it fully. Only Monday through Fridays, but Coniston would be able to offer Fridays. Mrs. Reed has met with them and gone over their program. And they do a lot of the simple work that we do in terms of healthy bodies, socially much playing, collaborative play, et cetera. One of the things in terms of just the, it does put a pretty large burden on all of our other aspects of payroll, of, you know, of attendance, of, you know, all those other kind of bureaucratic things that we do behind the scenes. It does add a big toll there. Another pro would be that for any of our staff who wind up working in after-school program, it's a pro for our kids because Coniston would continue to hire staff from here. It's a pro for the district because whenever any of our support staff, for example, work for the after-school program, it moves them into new venture retirement and then the district went and happened to pick up the new venture retirement cost. So it would, it would be a financial pro to the district as well to not have that added expense on there. And Mrs. Reed, did you want to?
The current director of after-school. The current director of the after-school program for Coniston has been working with Mrs. Rue on various projects. So she does have a connection to Brent Village School Park. And they have a very similar philosophy, which is pretty neat. I thought she was great, like great information she could mention, which I think it's everywhere. Stacking's an issue for them right now. But if they take over our after-school program, they are, like Cindy said, willing to hire our staff, are people who want to work for them. We have it obviously with ours because there's, that's pretty defined people here, but some very.
Yeah, and the pay rate is comparable between one weekday and Coniston. So, you know, it wouldn't be a big increase in pay at all. They would also unwilling, you know, we have some strict attendance limits right now. We don't know what's going to happen with distancing. There aren't many people could be there. But we estimated that Coniston would be able to take up to 65 students, which is currently nine of them are 58. And in the best of circumstances, whether we kept it or Coniston did before the pandemic, we were up to 70 or something. It just, that's way too big. No matter what happens, there still has to be a limit on the attendance. But I know Coniston will take at least 15 more kids than we currently count.
So would this location be at Coniston?
No, it'd be here.
That's my question. So they. Coniston runs after-school programs around the area. So they, like, they have a site in London, in some of these, Lebanon, I think. So they have, they do, their after-school programs onsite at several schools in the area already. Other questions from the board?
I know they periodically have future requests. That's nice.
The other thing just to consider is if he, if the board decides to contract out of Coniston, we are going to still have a surplus in after-school program. So while Coniston does have the ability for students to apply for CD for class, I would also recommend that maybe the board preserve some of that surplus and maybe we can supplement some of the kids who might still struggle to pay. If they didn't qualify for CD, that might be a good use of those surplus funds in the future.
What would be the timing of that? Soon or later, I guess.
Starting with the fall next year?
I think, yeah, I think the start of fall, we actually sort of make it official, Coniston, sign of me. I just want to make sure we don't, if this falls through for some strange reason, that we're not stuck in August, again, scrambling to figure out what we. we're not stuck in August, again, scrambling to figure out what we should do.
I think if the board approves it, we can just start the process going. We actually, we had to do some steps before we brought this to you. For example, the state had to come out and do an inspection of the facility to make sure, look at the levels of, you know, the population and the capacity for how many kids, so all of that's already been done. So there are some things that are already set in motion.
Yeah, and I would just recommend that we see this, sort of get that as soon as possible that there's enough runway to figure out what we're going to do.
I was just going to say thank you to both of you and anybody that was involved in this, for exploring this and bringing it forward. I think there's a lot of, I think just looking at the sort of pros and cons that you outlined there, one of the things that I think about is that I know there is a tremendous amount of administration that has to go with this program, and so I was thinking about what's the, what are we sort of, in positioning ourselves to gain in terms of time and opportunity from, I know specifically from Brenda, who does a lot of the work of helping to manage this program in terms of like numbers and payment and that kind of stuff, and for Kristen, whose job is to be the principal of our school and has also sort of taken on a lot of the administrative role of an after-school program, which isn't necessarily, it's, it's of course supportive and beneficial to the students and the families in the community, but it is not like central to the mission of educating all students in our community. So I, one of, I think one of the pros and cons of that, for me, that, one of the pros that is not, I mean, it's on here, but I think it's really about sort of that, like, how are we utilizing our resources? We have limited resources in people and in time, and we have an organization that's right next door that provides a really outstanding after-school program. So to be able to partner with them and contract with them and take advantage of that seems like it would be, I'm very supportive of that. I had actually, I had actually brought this idea up years ago at a board meeting of having Coniston do our after-school program, so I'm glad that it has come back in a way that I think is really, could be really beneficial to the community and to the administration of the district.
One quick question. With Coniston, is there Are there attendance requirements? I guess what I'm getting, getting to say is, for instance, if somebody has school lessons after school for three or four months, and after fall, you have to prepare me for fall to get to those, is that at all? Is Coniston, do students attend to that after-school program because of that?
So I'm not trying to exactly speak about it, I know that when we were talking costs, so I can't exactly speak to that 100%. I know when I was talking costs with her, she talked about what the cost would be for someone coming full time, and then she said, and of course it'd be less if they didn't come every day. So making use of children that you don't have to come every day, you're quoting right out of the school, so I can't.
That's right. I know students with that, all skiing and all that stuff, I think. The type of third time.
Any other discussion? I'm going to just let Denise join us again. Before we make a motion or take a roll, we'll just hold on just a moment until we make a motion on this agenda item. Just going to come back to silence. I can't take a drink with my mask on still.
No, doesn't work.
After all these years.
Oh, man. That doesn't work either.
Still doesn't. Or get the produce bag over at the grocery store? Or the bag when you're walking your dog?
We can, we can always move on and then go back to that relatively.
Let's see what our next, I think she'll want to hear our COVID updates. You won't be able to eat it through the mask. Yeah, Happy Lunar New Year!
Great, they're cooking. They're supposed to look like coins because it's Lunar New Year, and they're supposed to represent fortune for the upcoming.
And it's Groundhog Day tomorrow, everyone should remember. I don't know. It is a very popular holiday at our house, though, so there's been I'm never right, and the groundhog is never right, so. I know.
So I just wanted to add that earlier, I've asked that we welcome any articles tomorrow, they will be ready till Thursday, Friday.
Okay, all right, this is the board. Remember to go in on your signatures Thursday, Friday, Thursday or Friday.
If, if you don't see me on Thursday.
I will.
Thank you.
You know, it's had a time.
She will track you down.
So I do think Thursday is likely because of the weather.
Yeah, that's right.
Friday's the holy week, July.
I thought it was Thursday.
Well, no, it's Thursday night. Thursday afternoon, Friday.
Yeah, so it's Thursday, Wednesday afternoon late, and then Thursday morning.
Okay.
And by the way, it was, it's Tuesday, and I can't tell you how many people asked me if I would call this a day already.
Well, we're excited. It's not hard to say. We need something to look forward to. Okay. Okay, so to wrap up our discussion of the after-school program, from the conversation, it sounds like we're moving towards approving contracting after-school program with Coniston YMCA. So we would need a motion to approve the contract between the Brenton School District and the Coniston YMCA for the after-school program for the 2022-23 school year.
Would you want to say the contract process?
Yes, the contract to move forward with the process of establishing a contract.
So moved.
Second. All right, so I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Ed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, so our next agenda items are COVID updates, and we do have some updates in our board packet.
This is very brave in terms of COVID updates, but there was, when we changed from the 10 to 5 day, the board just didn't very explicitly state that this would apply to kids who are unvaccinated coming back from quarantine, which is also a change from 10 to 5 days with testing recommended again on day five. So we talked a lot about coming back from isolation after having COVID, we didn't explicitly talk about quarantine, so I wanted the board to actually act on that officially, to put that in our guidance.
So these would be students who have like an exposure, a family member a household contact, and so they are unvaccinated, and so we, they are currently required to quarantine for 10 days
Right.
after a household exposure.
But we could have them come back five days after last exposure with a negative test when you have access to you.
Which is what the HHS recommends.
There I am, yep. I did check with Mrs. Islander today, so we have had, like, with our 10 to 5 day switch, we've had 19 staff and students trying to come back after five days. 13 of the 19 are still positive on day five, and the remaining six that were negative, the majority of those people were actually asymptomatic with tested positive, so we're seeing, what I've heard, it's interesting because I've been hearing this from kind of informal check-in from school districts, we're seeing about the same percentage, is that about 70% of people are still positive on day five.
It sounds like the process of blessing.
Yeah.
Okay, so we would need a motion to approve the change that unvaccinated students may return to school after five days of quarantine, so long as they test negative on day five to return on day six. If they had a positive test on day five, they would complete the full 10-day quarantine.
Well, they have COVID at that point, so it wouldn't be warranted.
Oh, right. If they tested positive, then it would be, okay. Yep, and that would reset.
Reset, and they could retest on day five of that.
Right. Yes, so unvaccinated students may return to school after five days of quarantine, as long as they test negative on day five to return on day six. So a motion from Leslie and a second from Ed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay. Um, I would just highlight, and I know we have the minutes from the progress monitoring committee here, but I would just, and it is in the minutes, but I would just highlight, I think there, there is a different toll happening right now for teachers and support staff in terms of a real challenge that we've heard during those meetings for feeling like they're losing those kids that are out four or five to 10 days, losing touch with them, they're losing ground in terms of their academics, and there isn't a tremendous amount that we can do right now. I know, you know, the teachers and the staff and administrators are thinking about ways that we can stay connected with those students, but the real, the reality is that for some students, they're not able to stay connected during that time, so they're not able to do work well at home or to, you know, to stay connected, and that is being felt pretty, like deeply by the staff who's, may have, maybe having multiple students in their class, that they're having that experience of feeling like there, you know, some progress that they've made with those students is sort of slipping away. And so I just wanted to highlight that, to think that that was a different challenge than one that we've heard up to this point, because we are seeing the most number of students out for those extended periods of time because of COVID than we've seen to this point. So in this never-ending storm of changes and challenges, that was a, that was one that we hadn't seen as sort of highlighted before this last meeting, and I think that will just continue for some of our staff. Any other COVID updates right now? Okay. All right, so annual meeting procedures, just a quick review of what we're looking at next month. So we will have the meeting, it'll be set up just like this, so we'll have, we'll be here in the, in the gym, and we're all waving by to a former board member. We'll be set up here in the gym, we'll have CD here, folks who are coming, we are, you know, asking and requesting folks to wear masks as per our building and district policy, but we also understand that it is, folks have the right to vote, and there is a different set of requirements and standards for that. So if we do have folks that are coming to be part of, that are residents of Grantham, that are coming to exercise their right to be part of the voting process, which they of course have the right to do, who do not want to wear a mask, we will have a separate room set up for those folks. So for people who are watching, who are coming to the meeting here in the gymnasium, we will be asking folks to wear masks, and you will be able to vote. You will have to be here in person with us in order to vote. So folks who have been joining us virtually, we so appreciate your involvement and engagement. You are welcome to join us virtually if you are not a resident at Grantham, or if you are a resident of Grantham who understands that you will not be able to vote during the annual meeting. All votes have to be cast in person. We'll go through the annual meeting as we have previously, so unlike last year, it'll be in person with supervisors of the checklist present to register or to get, not register, to get people checked in off of the voter rolls, and we'll proceed with the meeting. And we do not have a March board meeting after that, the annual meeting is our meeting for the month. Any other policies or procedures for annual meeting that we should discuss tonight? Yes?
I was just going to suggest, can we get one more in, like, with the tables here?
Sure.
I think you'd make it easier.
Absolutely. Another one. And we will, we will, we are still going to have the meeting virtual, yes, right? Just so people will be able to participate in the voting, right, or virtual.
And they have no option to do that, like, at some other times during the day in person?
Okay, no, all voting has to be done in person in the, in the meeting, for the annual meeting.
Yeah.
For the election, for candidates, that's a different day.
Yeah, but there are no emergency rules for annual meetings here.
Okay. And I would
Although I did love standing outside for eight hours last year.
We had to meet some people.
And it was nice in the sun, although windy.
Yeah, I remember the tent.
Very, yeah.
I will say, I would just say, you know, for folks that are watching us virtually, I imagine there are people who feel more comfortable in that format this year. If you have concerns or you are wondering how you can best participate in a way that feels safe for you, please feel free to reach out to the SAU office to, you know, to any of the board members, we're happy to, you know, touch base with folks that might want to participate and feel concerned about that. We know that that is still a concern for people, and we want to make sure that even though we do need folks to be in person for voting, we want to make sure that everyone knows that their vote is important and matters to us, and we will work with you to find a way for that to be a safe experience for folks. Okay, anything else for annual meeting? All right. All right, so our next agenda item was candidate's night. At this point for school, we don't have any contested races. We have two open seats with two filed, candidates have filed at the moment, which the filing period has ended, so that's where it will stand. Do we know if there are any contested races for town?
I haven't heard yet of that, too.
Okay, so my recommendation would be at this point, so that, since we don't have a contested race, that I don't think we need to have a school board candidate's night. I would love for there to still be, like, short little whiteout, like a bio of each of our candidates, just that can be sent out or available on our website, just so folks know a little bit about the people that are on the ballot, but I don't think we need to have a candidate's night added into our very busy month. I mean, I love seeing you guys, but enough's enough, honestly. Anyone else have a different thought on that than you? Okay. Okay, our next item in our board packet. I don't know why you guys keep doing this to me. Karen. Is a
You're not.
Is a, oh, you're not, sorry. Is a resignation, so we do have a letter here from Karen Lassard, letting the board know of her intent to retire effective June 30th, 2022. Brenda's shaking her head.
Feel free to turn it down.
Well, what I was going to do is, if I was better at spreadsheets and numbers, I was going to make a chart that we could show just how much we need Karen to stay, and we could, like, move the numbers around and, like, fill in different numbers, and no matter what we did, it would still tell us, Karen, you need to stay. That was going to be my. So the board will need, we will need a motion to accept with very deep gratitude and sincere appreciation, and just so much thanks for your work, and we will say more later, the resignation of Karen Lassard.
So moved with appreciation and sadness.
So we have a motion from Leslie and a second from Denise. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay? Okay.
Karen, we're excited for you.
Yes, we are.
For you. Time has flown.
And we will, we will say more later, so. Okay, we have until, what was it, June 20, 30? We have until June 30th to say thank you, many times over. Okay, so our next agenda item, we do have three policies tonight. These are all first reading policies and they are in the board packet. So we're looking at policies EEAG, EF, and EFA. Anything in particular you want to tell us about these policies, Sydney?
Mainly that we didn't have them and they're required by law, except one that just needed a quick updating for from service management. I keep trying to move beyond the eight policies and they just keep coming.
Dragging it back. Okay, so we'll need a motion for the first reading of policies EEAG, EF, EFA.
So we still distrust them, right?
Yep.
Sure.
Alright, yeah, go ahead, Christine. Yeah.
EFA, understatement of policy, the second paragraph, the last sentence, there's some klutzy wording there. It says superintendent, superintendent is responsible for providing annual communication information. If I, maybe one of those words should be there, but not both. It's just all over again. Not really making sense. Okay.
I think, I think there should actually be a lift between those two words. So providing annual communication is part of the law with information about the policy and procedures.
Yeah, that would work, okay. Hey. Leslie. I can be loud, but I might as well. Okay, so we have a motion on the table to approve first reading of the, the policies I said before. Yes. No, we have one on the table.
We're discussing. I think we can vote, right?
Yep, so we have a motion from, we have a motion from Leslie and a second from Denise, correct? Alright, and so all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay? Okay, alright, our next item on our agenda is the principal's report.
And Mrs. Reed needs the microphone for she's.
Definitely do.
Yeah, she's going to go into detail about where some.
Did you just turn red?
The mic said he said, I'm going to share some. Beyond what I already said. But, I say that please switch on the microphone. I'm sorry. Yes, you are. But that's just. Here we go. It's loading. First slide is showing our reading NWA test. And that is not, I know we had a little discussion about this last time, that's not a sweet test, that's something we're reaching for. So I find, when I look at the, the new one test data versus the state SAS data, you have a lot of information for new one, so I think it's really quite fun to look at. When you look at the new historical data, it is, as you can tell, follow groups of kids on the biico, where you can go across grade levels and see how certain grade performed in different years or different tests. On that bottom left graph, you can see, I wish I had a better color.
Right here, I found my cursor.
You can see there's a dip in every grade level, the green, the yellow, or the red, and the blue. And that is actually, not surprisingly, the test we took was all white after we came home. And we took it, the following month, we took it again in the winter after coming back in the in-person, and you can see we jumped back up and then had remained fairly consistent with our historical numbers. So I think that's exciting that we were able to get ourselves back up there and I didn't, I didn't think it was a surprise at all that we had that, that dip back really worked. Over on the right side, right bottom, that follows loops of students or, or grades or classes, and you can see that there's that consistent rise, but you can also see on top with the diagonal. Not reflective in this, and you're going to, when I show you the NWA for math, it's the same thing, is the NWA. But I want to just point out that I can share that data with you later, but our our class needs are consistently higher than we did in the, which is also very exciting. So we go on to the next slide, just picking the three link. This is our state data, our SAS data. There's not as much to look at here. They didn't, we didn't do the test in 2020 because of COVID. So we don't get that really nice cross-representation of data, but you can see that there is some fluctuation in the percentage of proficient or above proficient, but it's generally pretty consistent and we're always above those percent of proficiency. Which coincides, I think, with what Denise was. And then the next slide goes back to NWA, but now looking at MAP. Same, same format and really you can see this, there are similar trends that happened with reading. We have that dip after the remote learning event back up. Looks like kind of big fluctuations back for that, kind of up and downs, but in the grade scheme, the things are really small, up and down, so it's really quite. And then on the right side, again, seeing the, for the most part, growth. Just lose that current segment of activity there. But again, except for grade three, fall 2020 and winter 2021, we are above the NWA being on those two third grade tests, we're right exactly at the NWA. And then looking at MAP for SAS, again, the same, not as much data to be looked at to look for trends. Seeing similar fluctuations that we do with LA, but fairly consistent throughout the years and always above the proficiency. There's a lot of data to look at, I was telling Sydney, that Casey Sylveen, I want to give a huge shout out to her, she loves data. And she and I, I think for weeks, had to throw in different graphs back and forth to try to find the best way to present everything. And she sent me something and I didn't understand and she kept talking with her mind and I recreated, she didn't understand what I was. So hopefully, we, we came up with something we both understand, or hopefully it's a vision.
Just one thing I noticed, I think in all the graphs, it's third grade, the youngest kids that you're showing data for seem to have the most impact.
So we kind of want to talk about this in, the over the period of never taking tests with.
Yeah.
So in both NY and SAS, it's, it's hard to say.
That's true.
What the, what the barrier was, but they, they've never taken standardized tests or, or a test on the computer like that. So it's a learning curve, it's multiple.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Sydney? And that was fast, so we wanted to send you to the.
Thank you. Any other questions for Kristen from her report? Thank you for doing that.
I don't remember where those are.
So our next agenda is superintendent's report. I know one, I don't have any data, except my report, with the exception that I did spend half a day down in Concord yesterday, the legislative update. So they walked us through the, I think, 138 education-related bills that are coming this year, so it's another mirror working hard to keep up with everything that's coming. I'm going to take you through all 108 now.
She was, thanks. We're holding our breath.
Any other questions for Sydney from her report? Thank you, and thank, I would say, Krista mentioned it in her, in her report, and I know that it's heavily on Kristen's shoulders, but also shared amongst everybody in the school and the SAU. I know the staffing has been very challenging and I just want to extend the board's appreciation for whatever kind of puzzle or magic or like hopes and wishes or witchcraft you do to be able to keep things running and staffed despite some real challenges in that area, so thank you, it's huge. Yes. Okay, so our next agenda item is the consent agenda. Are there any changes or questions to the consent agenda?
I just got one little question on expenditure fees. This is on page three of the expenditure report, provisioned contracted services. So obviously some additional unanticipated expenses, so is that coming out of reserve or other areas?
We can certainly get back to you, but I think so those were unanticipated.
Yeah.
Expenditures, it looks like we've spent about as much as what we have in Concord, maybe a little bit more, so it looks like it's been on target. We should be able to cover that eventually in the budget.
Alright. Okay. Any other comments or questions on the consent agenda? I think we'll need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second, I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Christine. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay? Okay, we need a non-public session tonight?
Just only if the board wants it based on the correspondence that I recently sent. But it's up to you.
I don't, I don't think we need a non-public tonight, alright, so no non-public session tonight. Just a reminder for folks who are still with us, thank you for hanging out with us tonight for our double, this is counted as a double meeting. So thank you for joining us next week, same time, same place. We will have the grounds renovation and playground bond hearing. And then on March 1st, here in the GBS gym, we will have the annual meeting. And I think that's all we have tonight. Okay, so we need a motion to adjourn. A motion from Leslie, we need a second. A second from Ed. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay? Okay, and the meeting is adjourned at 8:36. Thank you all, have a good night.